I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It looks like the minutes, the agenda that we have, that we have quite a bit of uh.
Signing.
Yeah, paperwork signing, so bear with us if you would. First up is approval of the minutes, get our pens out, of the January twentieth, twenty twenty, regular meeting.
So.
Okay, so I got a motion and a second to approve the meetings, all in favor please say aye. Motion passed.
Okay, regular session, how many minutes do we got? One, two, three, four, six seconds.
Okay, we got a January twentieth meeting.
Matter of fact, I'll just make a motion to approve all the special executive meetings, next one, two, three, four, five of them.
Okay. All right. All right. Our motions and a second to approve the whole shebang down through January twenty ninth executive meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. You start these, go on. Sometimes grandson or great grandson looking through all these old motions or minutes to see what your grandpa did, they look at it and say, gee, he could have already right, could be.
Well, the schools don't teach jersey, they're not going to go to reading anyways, they'll go to form.
Hot way, excuse me, claims docket for two hundred twenty-two thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents, and it is endorsed by our auditor and treasurer.
Motion to approve.
Motion second, all in favor please say aye. Motion passed. Then the next one up is approve other claims in the amount of three hundred thirty-eight thousand one hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. If it is signed.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion second, all in favor please say aye. You aye there, Mr. Speaker. Approve general claims. Yep. In the amount of seventeen thousand three hundred one dollars and seven cents. Group pension administrators. The guys that make all of them.
Yep.
All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Now we are down to early claims, I'm getting more on the list here. Good thirteen thousand. Thirteen thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars. Motion second, all in favor please say aye. Motion passed. We are down to certified claims, these are going out through the trustees and the city of Delphi, Burlington, Camden, Flora, Yeoman, Carroll, Delphi, Lostville, Flint Lake Schools, and Camden, Delphi, Flora libraries.
Motion to approve.
All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. We're ready for the.
I'd like to explain that, because I've had a couple phone calls after the agenda went out. It is not edit from the edit funds that you have your plan for, it's for the edit money that goes out to all the different entities, yes. And that will be a monthly payment.
Okay. Yeah. Motion second. By the way, edit funds is our economic development income tax, and that is the income tax that's collected off of the county. And part of that money goes to the county, and part of it goes area incorporated, like we have up here, Delphi, Burlington, Camden, Flora, and Yeoman, all get a portion, ranging from Delphi gives thirteen thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars down to Yeoman gives seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. Got a motion and second on this, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. P S A, that's the, for police.
For that nine-one-one?
Nine-one-one.
Public safety.
Public safety, thirty-four thousand four oh nine twenty-five. All in favor say aye. Motion passed.
And actually, that's the money that they put in the county coffers every month.
Okay. Two thousand four, now we're down to payroll claims. Two hundred eighteen thousand six dollars and eleven cents. Motion second, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. This is. April twenty. We have payroll claim, January eleventh, for two thousand dollars.
How long do we get these extra payroll claims, all the time?
This is one that he did not turn in with regular payroll, the next one is where they were reimbursed for the smoking.
Okay, motion second through. All in favor please say aye.
Well, we did it last time, and this is the late payroll, still friends.
Right, a lot of them didn't get their certificates all at the same time, so we'll pass these stragglers.
For five hundred and forty dollars.
Is it perfect? Is it perfect for smoking?
I'm gonna have to start so I can clear.
That's what they paid in, and so they're being reimbursed.
All further, to try to quit.
Right, it was an incentive.
I decided to quit, that's right.
Well, they pay into it, I think, because they pay extra for being smoked.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion second, all in favor please say aye. It's like when they came out with all the foreign bills back in the fifties, and they paid people for not raising corn. My dad wanted to go to the not raising corn difference real big.
Okay, this is all the different claims from all year up to November, I believe, and if you remember right, State Board of Council told us that we needed to have one of those on each, so we're trying to clean up the two thousand nineteen.
So that's what they spent for the roads for the year?
No, no, that has nothing to do with Paul's account. We already went over that with Paul, because he thought we were spending his money, but um.
Paul losing some hair over that ring.
Yeah, he was. This is what is sent out to the different entities also.
Okay.
Or we're distributing.
Yeoman surtax.
There should be a big packet here for you then.
Yeah, like thirty-seven acres you need. What kind of duty does that?
Big a motion, full. Motion to approve. Second, seven hundred sixty-one thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-seven cents.
You just said thirty, I knew fast, I mean, we can continue on.
Yeah. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
We can shuffle, make our three minutes later.
It's fine.
We got a register, take, good.
Handwriting's going downhill. We need a new pen.
Yeah.
I haven't done that together since we got.
Those are all fine.
Do you want to click one now?
Yes, that means to stay all together, there's just one picture. And I think we skipped over the county general unit too. We said county general, and then it said the rec. wrong now, so if you just say you have.
You signed it?
I think we signed it.
I thought we did too. In case we didn't, yeah.
Motion to approve county general plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we got a motion to approve county general, in case we skipped over that. Okay, and all in favor, say aye. I think it's, was there air in stone or enterprise management? Good morning, sir.
Thank you, sir. Nowhere on these papers will I ask you to sign today, so.
No, I'm sorry, I need to be.
I had come out, it's probably been a couple of months, but I had come out and spoken with you all about a preliminary analysis I had done for all of the different counties' vehicles, and what I've done today is kind of dove deeper into some specific departments that I think there's a definite opportunity to help out. I'll quickly review the analysis that I had put together. I started on that first page just to show that, you know, we're working with a lot of folks today. I've had an opportunity to expand our program over the past six or eight years throughout the state of Indiana, and we've got dozens of counties that we're partnered with, probably the most recent would be Cass County, working with those guys, but a number of cities and counties all across the state that I'd be more than happy to connect you with, to kind of talk about their experiences with us. But essentially what we do is we've come out and taken the same resources that have have made our rental operation a profitable, really a profitable entity across the country. We've got about two million vehicles all over the country, so we've got to have an ability to buy vehicles extremely well, sell vehicles well, understand the right life cycle for vehicles. What we've seen with different cities and counties is that as budgets have gotten tight, vehicles have been, the age of vehicles has been extended, and obviously when that happens, you're going to start getting into some, you know, you've got your preventative maintenance, but as you extend the age of the vehicle, you're going to start getting into some higher-dollar repairs, and so that's what's kind of shown there in the fleet vehicle budget. Essentially what I've done is looked at, you know, what you're operating today, and I can tell that, you know, about, just about two vehicles on average have been purchased if I kind of just look at at your fleet list and the model year, so it's about two vehicles are being replaced of your fleet, and knowing that, you've got an average age of about ten years old. So when we see that, knowing what we do, we feel like there's an opportunity for us to tighten that up. So if you look at page three there, that's going to be the Carroll County fleet profile. You've got thirty-two vehicles, and this is this is really just looking at light duty and below. We can help a bit with vehicles that are a bit larger than that, but I think those are the ones where we can do our best work and this this concept proves out the best. You can see you've got, you know, sedans, there's minivans, quite a bit of pickup trucks, some SUVs. Of that group of thirty-two, you've, like I mentioned, an average age of nine point nine years. So if you've got your average age of ten years, you probably have some vehicles that are fifteen and twenty years old, that probably aren't the most efficient vehicles throughout the county. So on average, looking at mileage, driving about eight thousand miles per year, which is pretty pretty typical of what I've seen as I've profiled this out, some of the different places that I've done it, you guys are going to be in a defined areas, there's not going to be a lot of mileage on these vehicles. So getting back to the recommendation of not extending the life of vehicles and getting into that higher operating expense world that you're currently in, in the first year, my recommendations typically starts with, let's get rid of anything that's ten years old or over a hundred thousand miles. You probably all agree those aren't going to be your most efficient vehicles, probably going to be the vehicles that are costing you the most. The recommendation would pull in sixteen of the thirty-two vehicles if we if we adhered to that criteria, and then the thought is, we can systematically continue to review this over the next five years, and we start to, you know, tighten that up, so eight years, eighty thousand, six years, sixty thousand, so on and so forth, until we have an entire county fleet that's operating in a more efficient way, and it's going to be a little bit easier for the department heads to get to get the job done. So that sounds good, having new vehicles, sounds good, you know, and would obviously be beneficial, but we know that that's got to be something that's cost-effective. So if you flip to page four, what I've done here is I've basically looked at what what you've done today, which is highlighted in yellow, like I mentioned, you've bought about two vehicles per year, knowing the types of vehicles, that's going to come out to right about fifty thousand or the forty-eight, nine eighty-six. Knowing the age of the fleet, we use sort of some industry averages and and look at the age and the types of vehicles to benchmark the amount of maintenance you're likely spending, and that's both in preventative service and obviously the likelihood that you're probably with this age of a fleet, going to get into some higher dollar repair. So that number came to fifty-four thousand two oh five. If you were buying two vehicles per year, the, you know, theoretically you'd be selling two vehicles per year, so I'd credit back two thousand dollars in in equity from resale, because you're just going to be selling probably some older vehicles. And then we profile out what you're spending from a fuel standpoint, looking at price of the pump, and making some assumptions from a miles per gallon standpoint. So that number comes to fifty-nine thousand, so all in, we're benchmarking a fleet budget of about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So then we start to play out the profile that I had mentioned on the previous page, and then we funnel in those sixteen vehicles, we put those vehicles on an open-ended equity lease structure, this lease doesn't have any mileage, no wear and tear charges whatsoever, it's all based on the equity that's in the fleet. So if I'm going to go out and buy a twenty-five thousand dollar, you know, pickup truck, we might finance that down to ten thousand dollars, knowing at the end of five years, fifty thousand miles, that vehicle's still worth fifteen thousand. So at the end of that period of time, we sell the vehicle for fifteen thousand, pay off the book, now you have ten thousand, and now you have five thousand dollars in equity. So that money comes back to the county, and then you can, you know, turn that vehicle over and roll that equity into that next vehicle, or we can cut you a check back, whatever you prefer. But that equity guards against any any, you know, kind of extreme wear and tear, if you bring the vehicle back over mileage and those sorts of things, so it's a very flexible lease structure. But basically what I'm showing here in that second line is that we could lease you sixteen vehicles for just under eighty thousand dollars, seventy-nine, six oh one. By doing that, you'd be replacing half of the fleet, and definitely the vehicles that are probably your highest likelihood of causing you higher dollar expenses, so you're going to pick up some pretty significant maintenance savings, so your maintenance is going to go from fifty-four down to thirty-three thousand. We're still going to be selling those vehicles on your behalf, and, you know, I'm figuring a thousand bucks a vehicle, which is obviously extremely conservative, but you see the sixteen thousand being credited back. New vehicles are going to do significantly better than the older vehicles from a fuel efficiency standpoint, given it's a low mileage output, not going to be huge savings there in fuel, but still some some savings to realize. So in that first year, the recommendation would be to replace half of the fleet at a net savings of fifteen thousand dollars. So we continue to play this out, just like the profile indicates, and, you know, nothing's set in stone day one, we obviously adjust as as the years go on, we come out and meet with you and talk about what the needs look like. But the way we look at it today, as we continue to add those new leases into the fleet, your operating expense is going to continue to fall until we get to a pretty efficient place after after about the five-year mark, same with fuel, and we show this over ten years to show the the ability that we can turn these vehicles over, essentially twice over, and basically get the county to a place where you have a completely efficient fleet at a net savings of about three hundred thousand dollars. So essentially you'd be then operating vehicles much like, you know, our rental car operation does, which is buying really effectively, which you can already do, but then selling when it's most attractive to that secondary market, and capitalizing on the fact that you get a great buy. So I guess that's a lot of numbers to throw at you in a pretty quick way, any questions in terms of what I put together there?
I see some of them here on the back, we've been talking for a quarter minute, and she wants a pickup truck, and so would I like to throw different numbers in on that?
Yeah.
Going from a van to pickup?
Yeah.
Then these are. Eight here, so what's the other eight vehicles?
So the other eight were the sheriff's department and the highway department. Those folks, you know, typically have a bit more of a plan as it is, and and these, this is a group that I was able to get a little bit more detail.
So my sheriff would want to change vehicles from Dodge to Chevy, you have no problem with that, not going to charge any extra?
No, not at all. No, the great thing about this is that, I mean, you're going to see a lot of Chevy from what I quoted out here, but what we do is we look at, you know, Chevy, Ford, Ram, and just determine, okay, what's the lowest total, you know, cents per mile to operate comparable vehicles? We bring that to you proactively, and then ultimately you guys make the decision on the manufacturer you want to operate.
Now, you know, like the corner, the, you know, they put lights and all that, and they drill holes and all that, is there a deduction or penalty on that?
Not at all, we're we're completely comfortable with that. Actually, we actually get involved and we'll actually cart the vehicle around and have all that aftermarket done for you, and obviously conversation with the department head.
So do you pay for it too? Are you doing those equipped?
We can capitalize it into the lease, or you can just kind of check directly to that vendor, but basically we we do it for you so that you can put that vehicle on the road, you know, the minute it gets here.
Because we got, I know the sheriff's department's got somebody that does it, and he saves them twelve hundred dollars a car, and he puts that money back into new equipment every year.
No, that's great, and and you can you can continue to use the vendors you all utilize. I'm not going to tell anybody what equipment to put in a vehicle that I'm not using, and I'm not going to tell you what vendor you should use either, that's ultimately your decision. Our our role is to make the vehicle itself as cost-effective as possible, so you can do more with budget dollars using our our lease structure, and and just to make the process easy by getting involved and, you know, handling logistics.
And Paul here, he probably needs new trucks with all new plow, would you do that too?
Yeah.
We're not interested in the highway department in terms of doing any leasing, we we think we can manage it better by the, first of all, we can take the state bid and buy trucks lower probably than what they can in terms of what's there, but we're not interested in doing any kind of lease situation with the highway department.
Yeah, so we buy vehicles the exact same way, so I I never come out and say I can buy vehicles cheaper, because we can essentially all buy vehicles the same because of the government incentives that are out there in the state Q P A. What we know is that the secondary market will pay great money for a vehicle if we get out of it at the right time, and and essentially by doing that, you can operate a vehicle at a lower cost versus extending the life, and a great example of that actually is Saint Joseph County Highway, was our first government client. We put, I think, thirty-four vehicles into the fleet, and we essentially were able to replace their entire fleet for what their annual budget was, so we lowered the age, and now we've turned those vehicles over, and their payment is actually going to be a lower cost in the second go-around than the first go-around.
Well, I know, I haven't talked to any of our department heads or you, but. I'd like to be able to talk to them first, even though we know how Paul stands, so I'd like to talk to them, like everybody else, and be able, and we can get back with the air.
Yep, and I'm more than happy, a lot of times I will, you know, I can get involved and explain the concept in a little more detail than I can do, you know, talking today, so I'm more than willing to help with that concept as well.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Like you said, a lot of numbers.
Right.
Have a good day.
Yep, have a great one.
Mike, you love? Good morning, gentlemen. Okay, just a couple things, real quick. As you know, cybersecurity's been on the forefront of everybody's agenda through from state all the way down. At that executive council, or the executive meeting that we had, we discussed the FireEye contract was probably going to be made mandatory by state legislature, and that's based off of Senate Bill one seventy-nine, I believe it is, one seventy-eight, one seventy-nine. It's mainly geared toward. It's mainly geared towards the elections. One of the things that they're requiring is that we get involved with the FireEye, which is another firewall. For at least the first three years, they're anticipating it on being free. And then they're not sure if the state's going to continue to pay for it afterwards. But if the state bill does go through for the election, we have to have that.
By where?
Uh, depends on when the state law goes, or when that goes through.
We tossed a Randy. The other night. If not only mandatory, it wouldn't be good to save us. If we can get rid of another, if we understood all that technology, we can get rid of one of our firewall because this one here does the same thing plus more.
He did say the fee. Value of this was still 40,000?
Roughly 40,000, you mean?
Per?
Per set. Now, the only, anybody who's tied to courthouse network will be the ones that are covered underneath that one.
This is a good one. Let's save your treasury records here. Our treasury. It's going to get one of those ransom ransomware.
Yeah, if we get involved in ransomware, it could end up being for exchange costs. If we get hijacked.
And only, well, we think the only expense we would have to pay is for some of the extra equipment that's stored.
The tower, so the tower and the and the backup.
The backup battery.
Well, we're also working on getting that. No, we're low cost.
Hopefully I got a secret gear. I think I found one.
Okay.
I'm I'm the one I get back to work.
Have you discarded one?
Well, they discarded the power's all them, the backup batteries. All they have to do is replace the battery, you save yourself almost 300 bucks.
Oh, what's the, this year, hanging over?
I don't think they're putting one under because the state could have shoved down our throne anyway.
Well, you.
I think we got to have the protection because they don't want to have problems like that you hear about. These corporations, they got got ransomware and they end up, I'm going to shut them down for a while and hustle a bunch of money, so. I think this is a permanent solution. Just start a league. I mean, this stuff changes all the time. All people are there, so. Again, same target. And protect yourselves is.
I'm looking to approve it.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so I have a stand. I have a motion and a second to enter into this cyber security services agreement with Car, Cara, Cara Soft Technology Corporation, FireEye Incorporated.
Did you went through this contract, correct?
All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. So there's only one place to sign it?
Yes, you just want to.
One signature page?
And still, with cybersecurity, the other thing that was brought up in the executive session was the use of county employees using personal emails on their county computer for county work. The problem with that, by that happening, they can potentially open themselves to actions. So one of the things that was discussed, and I don't know if you guys are going to have to do an ordinance on it or a policy, but no more Gmail accounts, Yahoos, Hotmail, whatever, to be used by county employees. That if they work for the county, that they do have a county email. I know this is going to bring a cost in, but it's reducing our chances of opening ourselves up to volume builders.
Doesn't, that's not including your phones, right?
That doesn't include your phones.
It's just your laptops and your computers of your business.
Right. And if you have a personal, if you're using your personal phone for county emails, kind of warn you that if any time the Freedom of Information Act comes out and they want text, emails and that, they can download your phone if that FOIA comes out.
They'd be awfully bored if they got one of them coming.
I'm sure they would serve you. It's just a, something to go, but.
Do we need to put something in the handbook of personnel? I know there's something in there already, but do we need to do another ordinance?
I don't know what the personnel has to say.
Right, but what we have right now is because of the cost of the email, I'm not picking on 911, but I'm going to use her as an example. She's got her email and then that is a county email, and then all of her employees, the 12 active ones that she has, it'll be like M. Finch or, what is it, CACO?
Yeah, CACO and 911 at gmail dot com is what we currently have for.
So there's 12 dispatchers that have that. The jailers, some of the jailers have the same thing, have a Gmail account. And I know that we've had some discussion in the courthouse with other department heads where they say, hey, we've got people using Gmail accounts. And that, and we got it, we got to stop that.
For something like them, they use it for communication inside.
Right, but they also, but when we use codes of red, they're using it to launch code red messages as well.
And in classes, they sign up for it, their certificates go there, their classroom directions go there.
To the Gmail account?
Yep.
Because you need more money in your budget for county email.
Yep.
So I don't know how you guys want to go, I'm just bringing that to your attention.
So is there a way, I should ask Mr. Randy, for Cassidy to have her her purse for herself and one at all dispatchers can log into and read?
Well, there is, there's a CC jailer that they're part of as well. And the other problem with that one is, is when it comes to the cyber training that you guys have already authorized Randy to start doing, they would all have to log into that CC jailer to receive that that training. So we're never going to actually know who received the the cyber training monthly because they all log into that same account.
But Randy's also looking to get us better pricing?
He is trying to get some better pricing.
Yeah, they want us to like 83.
They went from 74 to 84. But everybody, every other system that he's looked at is roughly the same price. So I don't know.
Just another thing, it'll cost more money just so we don't have to spend money to pay ransomware. It's all because of. Well, Tim, would you look through our personnel to make sure it's, I'm making sure it's there, I think I read it.
Personnel policies can, but, I mean, in some aspects, it applies to just employees. In some, in some respects, it applies to employees and elected officials. This would be something that needs to apply definitely to elected officials as well as employees.
All employees.
And it may be more effective to do as your, what you do with the website is to have, use an executive order. And the advantage is that that applies to elected officials as well as employees and it is enforceable directly by the board commissioners. So I think when we find out the situation with, if we have any exceptions, you know, for E911 or if we have any temporary situations that we won't be able to implement this, then I think we can use the executive order and have those exceptions, if there needs to be an exception temporarily for, like E911 or the jail violation.
Well, I mean, we don't have the installed yet, probably going to take, what, another month and a half or something?
For FireEye? Yeah, once I get the contractor, Randy, he said about a month.
Okay, so.
Still, that gives us a month to get, the department has to see what they need and get to the council and see what they say about the extra money for their.
I I think the thing to use and to, once we find out somebody better, is is an executive order, like like we're doing with the website.
Cassidy?
Interesting, I know your guys' email costs more to the year than what ours currently do. Is it possible that we can allow the department heads to decide if they want to go on a county-wide system or if we can keep with the sheriff's department's systems for cost savings?
Talk to Randy. Because we'll still be communicating together.
Right, but they're on a different server.
We're on a different server.
So it's a hidden.
Yeah, but if they send there, you know, to us and it's attached and it comes to us, the FireEye is supposed to catch it.
Right.
But if it don't.
If it don't.
Then we're liable for ransom.
But it should have, since it's using an official email. I'll I'll double check with Randy though, but it should have all the same except for the FireEye portion. Now, where it can stop it potentially is if they email in to us and it catches it here. So the only ones that would end up being affected would be.
The sheriff's?
The sheriff's department or highway or whoever.
Run back up your records? So it sounds like we need to just. We're going to waste by April. Give everybody plenty of time to find out what they need, everybody get their stuff.
Yes.
So I'm I'm sorry to Mike, this would mean all my employees would have to have a Carroll County file.
Yes. Which you've got a ton of employees, which it's going to, I mean, it's going to be expensive.
Yeah. And it's being forced on us. For at least three years, then we have to pay for it.
Well, the state, if they find the funding, then they'll be able to continue to fund it. But cyber is always going to be a growing issue.
So we probably just added another 20,000 or more?
By next year, there'll be waves around what we're doing now, so.
Well, hopefully, hopefully this will keep continuing to grow with them as the different attacks come, that we can change our posture. But right now, what we have is eggs and these FireEye will definitely help.
Well, we're we're going to save about 150 a month from the other, so.
Right.
That's me.
150, 200.
I am, it's probably got what, 15, 20 employees?
45.
We have 45 employees. Does your part-time have emails through you?
They have, we just, they, they have them now.
And that's where we need to get away from it.
Everybody does.
Everybody's, the majority of them, everybody's part-time employees or.
But if they get a ransomware, what would they want out of him? Will everybody's medical records, is that what you have on there?
They're using, they're using it for different ways, and I'll give you an example because it happened amongst us already once. Likely they didn't get nothing. I got hacked and the guy actually replaced my email to where it ghosted my email, but had his inside my settings. I stopped getting all emails. Well, he got into my contacts, he got hold of Doug's, and then ended up, an EMS guy that Doug talks with down in California ended up calling me before he opened it. I, you know, hey, straight up, don't open that. So we've been, I mean, we've already been hit.